Aloha and welcome to the hearing with the Senate Committee on Economic Development and Tourism. Today is Tuesday, March twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, and this is our one P M agenda. We're in conference room two to nine. Hearing is being streamed live on YouTube. In the unlikely event that we must abruptly end this hearing due to technical difficulties, the committee will reconvene on Thursday, March twenty seven, twenty twenty five at one oh one P M in conference room two to nine. The committee has gone through all the testimonies, so encourage you to stand on your written testimony. And if you'd like to add comments, you have one minute to do so. This agenda has five resolutions, so we'll go ahead and start off with S C R four zero slash S R two four. First up, uh, D B I D Director Tokioka with comments. Second up, Jason Chung testifying for military affairs council in support. Uh, anybody else wishing to testify on this measure?
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Wayne Noye, Hawaii Technology Development Corporation. Uh, my apologies for not being able to send in testimonies in time, um, but we would like to, this is advanced manufacturing. Um, so, you know, again, we just want to make some comments that, you know, the, the proposed bill does support and align with our national, our federal program, which is the Innovate Hawaii Program that supports advanced manufacturing. And we are, um, in partnership with the University of Hawaii and D B I D for cyber security. So we highly encourage the passage of this bill so that we can do a list, a little bit more work into how we can um, better support our local small and medium sized businesses to get into advanced manufacturing and cybersecurity as, as we all know, right? We need to diversify and we need to make sure that we provide um, the, the programs and the support to, uh, support our small businesses. So thank you again, and my apologies for, um, not submitting written testimony, but we can get that in too.
Thank you, Wayne, and great event on the fourth floor.
Yes, thank you, Senator, for support.
And innovation technology. Appreciate you guys being here.
Thank you.
Uh, anybody else wishing to testify? State your name.
Oh, thank you, Senator, Chairman Dakota and, uh, distinguished members of the Senate, Russell Home with APEC Hawaii. I know this, uh, having this high tech kind of, uh, development Hawaii's been going on for thirty, forty year years, we're trying to diversify economy. I remember when Senator Fukunaga was the House of Representative, she was pushing for the Kaimtech, uh, Milani Technology Park and all those. We should still utilize the Milani Technology Park and some of the state owned enterprise zone. Whereas Milani Technology Park is a foreign, uh, trade zone, so you don't have to pay federal tax. If we use the state enterprise zone, uh, you know, they have a leeway on the state taxes, so it gives the benefit for the investors from the high tech development businesses to come to Hawaii and, and do business in those kind of facilities. So I think we should go back and re, uh, see what locations I mean ideal for those kind of developments for give them a break to a tax breaks for those high tech corporations to do business in Hawaii. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and with that, those are your support, right?
Yes, and support.
Anybody else wishing to testify on that measure? Seeing none, uh, members, any questions? Okay, uh, moving right along. Uh, next up on the agenda, S C R sixty one slash S R slash S R forty six, requesting the Department of Business, Economic Development and Tourism to sponsor a Michelin guide for restaurants across the state. First up, testifying for H D, uh, Caroline Anderson, Inter President and C E O.
Chair, Vice Chair, Members, Claudia, on behalf of Caroline, she's still at her H D board meeting, let me stand on our written comments.
Thank you. Next up, uh, Kyoni Shizuma, I in opposition. Uh, anybody else wishing to testify on this measure? Seeing none, members, any questions? H D, please.
So this mission guideline. Our point is.
Um, I, I think the recognition for our local culinary scene can be valuable. I think we've seen a lot of spin offs that come from and benefits that come from it. Um, I think we need to take a deep look at it depending on the cost. One of the things that we can't, uh, determine at this moment is what Michelin would agree to. Uh, we've looked at other states that are in the testimony about what other states have paid to bring a guide to, and the judges or inspectors too, but, um, that part we'd need to do some more due diligence.
Yeah, because according to the testimony, in some states is two point seven million dollars.
Hmm.
One point five million another, um, so I don't know, I mean, is that what the monies?
We need to do the due diligence.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I can, yes, quick question. So what does sponsoring a Michelin guide for restaurants entail?
My understanding is it would bring inspectors to Hawaii who would go around the various restaurants and then evaluate them and then assign, uh, Michelin stars.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, uh, moving on to S C R ninety slash S R seventy three, requesting the Agribusiness Development Corporation to assume responsibility for the routine maintenance repair of the Kohala ditch. Uh, first up, Wendy Gay testifying for Agribusiness Development Corporation.
Chair, Vice Chair, Mark Copymore from A D C, would you stand on your testimony and support?
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to testify on this measure? Seeing none, uh, members, any questions? Uh, question for A D C, please, Mark. So Mark, based on, um, the Kohala ditch, if you guys were to assume responsibility on the A D C, how long would it take to begin the work?
Well, I was looking up, uh, trying to research as much as, uh, is available right now, study wise. And there's not, there's not, uh, much. Uh, I believe a lot of the, the, as many of these systems are similar, they, they cross multiple landowners. I think the major one in this case would be community schools, bishop of state. So we would wanna meet with all the stakeholders, understand what's going on and then determine what path forward. It would be to either maintain by, you know, we'd hire staff to do it, or we would work with the current user stakeholders, create an association. There is one there, but I'm not sure how cohesive or, you know, how, um, how effective it is right now. And then there was ten million dollars appropriated, I think last year or the year before. Uh, I don't believe that work, uh, any of that work had been done, I'm not sure. Uh, so I'm thinking there would be, you know, our repair and maintenance. Uh, so, uh, I think what would happen is the first year we would have to just figure this all out, determine what was needed, what, you know, what kind of repairs could be done quickly? And that, uh, we had, we have funds available to, to perform some of that. And then we would have to come back with some requests for C I P, for whatever engineering and actual repairs. The collapse was in, I think, twenty twenty one. So, um, right now there, these farmers are either trucking water in or, you know, trying to make do with what they can using county water, which we know is very expensive for for farming and, uh, um, like ranching use.
So you guys ever had the conversation with the Department of A?
I have not personally, no.
It's D O A here. Um, so if they have not used the ten million dollars and we were to do a provision transfer the ten million to A D C, would that work to address exactly what you're talking about?
Um, I think that would be a start, i- i- you know, um, it would depend on how much the magnitude of the work. So if they, if they understand that, um, or if there's, if, you know, there's a clear what work is needed to be done, then that makes it a lot easier, of course. I, I, I don't know right now.
Would actually help if they were here to address that, but, um, at least it would be a start, right?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? I'll see none. Uh, moving on to S C R one two one, uh, requesting Department of Business, Economic Development and Tourism to establish the to establish a tourism and gaming working group. First up, uh, D B I D Director Tokioka in support. Next up, Caroline Anderson.
Chair, Vice Chair, Members, we stand on our written test.
Thank you, uh, but stay with comments, uh, except prosecutor attorney Steve Alm.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Decoy, Vice Chair Wakai, Members of the Committee. I'm Steve Alm. We're in strong opposition to this, uh. It, setting this up would just open the door to legalized gambling here in Hawaii. And sports gambling casinos will be big deals, as Stephen March said in The Atlantic. Before there was Las Vegas, now there's Las Vegas in every phone. Uh, and gambling relies on addiction for its business model to function because legalized gambling does increase problem gambling. And a small percentage is gonna lose most of the money. And, uh, it, research shows also that the poorest members of the society are the ones who do it. If you've ever been to a disadvantaged place on the mainland, long line outside seven eleven, people spending forty, fifty dollars like an investment on lottery, not realizing their chances of winning, you're more likely to get hit by lightning, so. Uh, and I don't think the, uh, a tourist, because gambling's everywhere on the mainland, except Utah. Uh, they're not gonna come here to gamble. So if they do choose to go to gamble casino, whatever, it means they're not going to the Polynesian Cultural Center. They're not eating food. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, next up, uh, Stanford Carr testifying for Aloha Halawa District Partners.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Chair Decoy, Vice Chair, and Members of the Committee, Stanford Carr, one of the principals with Aloha Halawa District Partners. Um, here to strongly support Senate Concurd Resolution one twenty one, which is establishes a gaming working group within the Department of Business, Economic Development and Tourism. Uh, this measure seeks to explore country comprehensive gaming policy and a framework to drive economic growth, job creation, investment and tax revenues for the state of Hawaii. Notably, the resolution directs the working group to examine the potential for gaming activities in Aloha Stadium Entertainment District. Uh, Halawa District Partners respectfully request an amendment to S C R one twenty one to include A H D P as a member of the gaming working group. A H D P was selected through a competitive bid process. Uh, having a seat at the table will, uh, allow us to have the, uh, discussions when transforming this transformative project. And I mean, sure that, uh, with our public outreach with the community, that their voices are heard and that the goals of this working group are in alignment with our plans for infrastructure and development.
Thank you. Uh, next up, Cody Sula testifying for Ironworker Stabilization Fund.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. We submitted written testimony and, uh, when I stand on that, I'd just like to highlight, we do believe that this is a good first step into looking into the gaming industry so that all stakeholders can, uh, put in uh, the, both the positives and the negatives of, of gaming industry in Hawaii. So encourage you guys to pass this. And we especially like that labor is named in the bill, uh, because it's our working people is gonna be affected by this. They have a voice for them in there. Uh, we do support. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up, Aaron, Aaron Midby testifying for Boyd Gaming on Zoom. Go, go ahead.
Hey, good afternoon, Chair Decoy and, uh, Chair and Vice Chair Wakai, Members of the Committee. For the record, Aaron Midby, on behalf of Boyd Gaming Corporation, we appreciate the opportunity to testify in support of S C R one twenty one. We did submit written testimony and I'll stand primarily on that, but I just wanted to highlight a couple of key points that we believe this resolution is an appropriate first step for the legislature to take before passing any gaming, uh, public policy. And, um, believe that this bill resolution, the way it's set out convenes a group of diverse and stakeholders who have experience and expertise necessary to provide the data research and information that will be necessary for you all to make an informed decision. And also think that the timeline set forth is sufficient to have those discussions and create those findings and recommendations. So appreciate it again and thank you so much.
Uh, thank you. Uh, next up, uh, Brendan Makalava.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. Uh, my name is Brendan Makalava. An urge to reject S C R one twenty one. We believe that gaming industry should not write the rules it seeks to follow. S C R one twenty one gives gaming operators multiple seats at the table in developing policy meant to regulate them. Native Hawaiians who will be most impacted are limited to a single vote. This is not a balanced or fair process. Too many times industries have profited off of Hawaii without reinvesting in its people or respecting its culture. Without clear guardrails, gaming will follow the same pattern, benefiting outside companies while leaving local communities to deal with the consequences. If a working group moves forward, it must be led by native Hawaiian voices and government agencies. Industries can contribute information, but it should not help write policy. Gaming policy must be developed with transparency, strict oversight and a focus on protecting Hawaii's long term interests. Nation of Hawaii is ready to participate in these conversations, but only if it is community led and built to benefit Hawaii, not corporations. For these reasons, I respectfully urge Committee to Reject S C R one two one. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up, Bumpy Conahing for Nation of Hawaii in opposition.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, Members. I just wanted to, um, the working group does not reflect Hawaii's values. Our state has seen how outside companies come in, extract profits and leave our people behind. Um, the government agencies and native Hawaiians should lead and the industry should be viewed as a resource, not a decision maker. Gaming is a serious issue that requires integrity and accountability. The nation of Hawaii believes in responsible, community driven development. But this process does not give us confidence that gaming policy will be shaped with our people in mind. This is not the time for the fox to be guarding the hen house. This is an opportunity for self determination, for our economic opportunities. For these reasons, I respectfully, respectfully urge you to reject S C R one twenty one. Mahalo.
Thank you. Uh, next up, John Kialoa Garcia testifying for Nation of Hawaii in opposition. Kehaulani Lam, uh, testifying for Hawaiian Civic Club with comments, Claire Tamamoto, uh, testifying for Community Association with comments as well as Dwayne Baltista. Um, oh, you're here, uh, in person as an individual. Aloha.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. I strongly support, oh, excuse me, my name is Dwayne Baltista. Uh, strongly support S C R one twenty one for, um, creating this, uh, working task force, um, by looking at the, um, the working group. We, we have the proper people in place to create and implement these policies and procedures that, uh, in the future that we're gonna hold. And I feel that, um, having this working group will establish the rules and regulations for the gaming for a positive impact for, for, um, the people of Hawaii when the time comes, if, um, when we get to that point of the, the gaming side. But other than that, thank you guys for your guys' time and appreciate the ongoing discussion. And thank you again for having Labor as, um, number seven on the S C R, uh, resolution. Aloha, and thank you.
Thank you. Uh, are anybody else wishing to testify on this matter?
Chair, Members, Brennan Morio on behalf of the Stadium Authority, I apologize if our testimony did not make it in, but we uh, wanted to provide comments that while we understand this resolution just creates a working group, um, we are, we always, always do encourage the exploration of new revenue or alternative revenue streams that is meant to, uh, be reinvested into building a new stadium. So we, we do support this.
Thank you. Anybody else which is?
See, I'm seeing my ideas, just think, can't reach me. Good afternoon. Hi, O'Donoghue. Good afternoon, Chair and Members of the Committee. My name is Cliff LeBois. I'm with the Ironworkers, uh, Union Local Six Two Five, uh, Stabilization Fund. I'm also here on behalf of the Hawaii Building, Construction and Trade Council. We just had a meeting this morning to go over this bill. Everybody's exciting that, uh, we're putting the committee together to move forward in, in figuring this, this main thing out. We definitely need it. We need new money in the state, but they wanted me to read this list. These are the seventeen unions that's supporting you outside. A total of thirty five thousand members, the electricians, the elevators, the plasters, installators, bricklayers, plumbers, sheet metals, teamsters, I B W, oilers makers, ironworkers, painters, glazers, floor lasers, drywall tapers, roofers and operating engineers. We hope that we can get this thing passed and we thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, anybody else wishing to testify on this measure, please?
Chair, Vice Chair, Committee Members, my name is Kevin Lai and I'm speaking today as a resident of Hawaii for twenty years. We are a unique state and it was mentioned earlier that we are one of the precious few states who do not now have legalized gambling. I'd like to urge the committee to consider that we maintain that status because part of that is what makes Hawaii unique and a different place to visit for those who do visit. But more importantly, as was mentioned earlier, some of the downstream negative impacts that gambling can bring to those who may not know what's going on at that time and downstream from that, the consequences both from family perspectives, from financial perspectives. Because of those reasons, until the time comes when we as a state recognize that we absolutely do need to pursue gambling, let's push that off for as long as possible. And so therefore I urge the committee to please decline, reject C R one twenty one. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to testify on this measure? Seeing none, uh, members, any questions? Okay, moving on to, um, S C R sixty five slash S R five zero urging the Stadium Authority finalize a contract for the construction of the New Aloha Stadium and to continue its efforts in earnest to create the New Aloha Stadium Entertainment District. First up, uh, Stadium, testifying for Stadium Authority, Chris Sarayasu, with comments.
Oh, the Stadium Authority, uh, has someone in support of your level.
Thank you. Uh, next up, Stanford Carr testifying for Aloha Halawa District Partners.
Stanford Carr, Aloha Halawa District Partners, uh, standard testimony and support.
Thank you. Next up, Elliot Miles, uh, as an individual in opposition. Kyoni Shizuma, also an individual in opposition, and Janice Turner in opposition as an individual. Anybody else wishing to testify on this measure?
So Homer with, uh, APEC Hawaii, but today I'm just gonna testify being a sports fan, just like in a silent majority of Hawaii who supports, who wants Aloha Stadium. And I coach youth baseball, youth soccer, and I used to be a jock in high school as well, so I know what the sports fans want. Using our taxpayers' money and, uh, having this kind of, uh, privatization kind of project is good, but we should, we should know what's going on with women deadlocked for all these years waiting. I know there's a two proposal with two, uh, R F Ps out there with the two proposed developer being Stanford Carr, one of them, and Kobayashi Group on the other side. So we wanna know what's going on. Let's get the project rolling and award the project. So if they got problems with the permanent and finance, ask me. I can tap into some of these investment funds that, uh, President Donald Trump and Prime Minister Ishiba of, uh, Japan said, we're gonna bring one trillion dollars for infrastructure development projects in the United States as well. Chairman's son of the SoftBank said he's gonna invest five hundred billion dollars into the U S soil for high tech demand. So let's get some of this money into Hawaii. If these developers can't do it, we'll form our own group and we'll do it among us politicians and, uh, groups and, uh, I'll be forming my foundation for that. Thank you very much. Let's get the ball rolling.
Okay, um, anybody else wishing to testify on this measure? Seeing none, members, any questions? Uh, Senator Wakai.
Uh, Mr. Carr. Yeah, the, the previous speaker mentioned that there's a silent minority who wanna see this stadium come about. But the actuality is, it's a silent majority of people that want to see the stadium built. Can you tell us about, uh, numbers and a poll that you have come across that says, uh, that a vast majority of residents of Hawaii, not just Oahu, but of Hawaii, wanna see the stadium developed and go forward?
Sure, Senator Wakai, uh, we hired the Tolton Research, independent research firm to conduct a, uh, toll, a poll of six hundred registered Hawaii voters, including the neighboring islands, so Oahu, Maui, Kauai and the Big Island. The results were, uh, sixty nine percent, um, supporting, um, total support for, uh, gaming. Um, it, it's funny because we've watched gaming over the last thirty years. And I think that the time has come that Hawaiians people want, um, to have gaming for the financial, um, uh, support that it can provide for Kupuna Care, um, housing.
Let's actually stick with, uh, the stadium, not, not gaming, that's a totally separate issue. But, uh, what's, what's the value to the public of having a stadium surrounded by mixed use development?
It, this will be in the billions. Um, multi billion dollar project. It's a twenty five, thirty year build out, which will include not only the stadium, but over four thousand residential housing units, half of which will be affordable to households, um, uh, two, possibly three hotels, uh, to serve the, also in collaboration with the Department of Defense and in Dopecom for, uh, Conference Center Hotel. Couple of hundred thousand square feet of supporting office for the, uh, the business community. Uh, and then neighborhood commercial services and amenities and retail, including culture, Hawaii Music Hall of Fame, the Hawaii Sports Hall of Fame, um, a venue featuring the Polynesian Voyaging Society and the Renaissance of our culture over the years.
You know, there are two people who submitted testimony in opposition to this resolution, both of which, uh, promote the idea of scrapping the stadium and just putting housing all over it. Uh, we all know that housing is a societal need here, but why would that be a bad idea? To just plaster that entire ninety eight acres with tens of thousands of, uh, units of housing?
Well, we need a new home. If we're gonna continue to support the University of Hawaii in Division One football, um, it's been an important part of our university ecology over the last hundred plus years. Um, the, the community misses it, including the Neighbor Island communities, um, the residents, uh, and so it, it's going on five years since the stadium has been condemned. Um, we have been pursuing this opportunity endeavor since the first release of the R F Q in twenty nineteen. And we continue to be here to work towards, um, making this a realization.
So the minority of people who are kind of anti-stadium and wanna see more housing, they have this anticipation that somehow we're gonna have the same stadium surrounded by a parking lot. But what you're proposing is actually additive to the housing issue. So you're actually helping solve the problems that these folks seem to have a problem with, which is a lack of housing. Your additive, you're actually providing a solution to the pain point that Hawaii's currently feeling.
That is correct. A, a new twenty first century urban community where people can live, work, play, learn and thrive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All any other questions? See none, um, um, brief recess. Thank you, uh, for joining us. We are going into decision making. First up, S C R four zero slash slash S R two four request, requesting Hawaii Technology Development. Corporation to increase its focus on advanced manufacturing and cybersecurity to allow local manufacturers to expand production, lower costs and create new products. Um, we are gonna pass this, uh, reso as is, um, any discussion. Seeing none, uh, Vice Chair for the vote, Chair votes, aye.
My vote, yes, Senator Fukunaga.
Aye.
Senator Kim and Alar Excuse, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next up, S C R six one slash S R forty six, requesting Department of Business, Economic Development and Tourism to sponsor a Michelin guide for, for restaurants across the state, um. We're gonna make an amendment to, uh, S C R sixty one slash S R forty six. Change page one, line thirty to say review, evaluate the cost and benefit of return of investment on possible sponsorship of a Michelin guide for restaurants across the state. Any discussion? See, see none, uh, Vice Chair for the vote, Chair goes aye.
I vote, yes, Senator Fukunaga.
Aye.
Senator Kim and Alar Excuse, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next up, S C R nine zero slash S R century, requesting the Agribusiness Development Corporation to assume responsibility for the routine maintenance and repair of the Kohala ditch. You know, just on a say, last year, the Department of A received ten million dollars for this legislature. I would have thought that the Department of A would have at least been here to address that based on, um, the issues we have on the Big Island with the Kohala ditch, um, as I'm not gonna make amendment to it, but in the committee report, I like it to reflect that the ten million dollars be transferred over to A D C. As I'm not gonna make amendment to it, but in the committee report, I'd like it to reflect that the ten million dollars be transferred over to A D C. A S A P so that we can actually address the Kohala ditch situation up on the Big Island. With that being said, um. We're gonna move the measure as is, um and um. Comments addressed in the committee report. Um with that being said, Vice Chair for the vote, Chair goes aye.
I vote yes, Senator Fukunada.
Aye.
Senator Kim and Alar excuse, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Uh in regards to S C R one two one requesting Department of Business Economic Development Tourism to establish a tourism and gaming working group. Um. You know, we, we constantly struggle with this one in uh issues pertaining to gaming, uh gambling. You know, all this is a working group and I think um. You know, there should be discussion whether or not this is something that we're gonna entertain. We base on the study, yeah. And I think this will really flush it out, um whether or not we see fit. I, I do wanna acknowledge that in the resume. You know, if you look at their representation on their end. Also the recommendation that chairs of the Standing Committee of the Senate and House can also um. Purview for matters of the economic development, as well as to serve as cultures of the working group. Several of those um seats. Are actually Hawaiian, uh native Hawaiian representative. As well as uh one individual representing native Hawaiian culture to be invited by the culture persons. I think this will allow us to give us a lot more conversation, as well as to have labor on board. Um I believe that most of us that have been born and raised in Hawaii has a vested interest to figure out, is this something we really wanna have? I think the study should flush a lot of that out. So with that being said, um. I'd also like to add on H A H D P as part of the working group, um and we're gonna keep it for conversation, um. As we move along uh with this resume. Uh with that being said, we will pass this with an S D one, making any necessary technical amendments, Vice Chair for the vote, Chair goes aye.
I vote yes, Senator Fukunada.
Aye.
Senator Kim and Alar excuse, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next up S C R six five slash S R five zero urging the stadium authority to finalize a contract for the construction of the Nuala Stadium. And to continue its earth efforts in earnest to create the Nuala Stadium Entertainment District. We are gonna move this um as is, any discussion?
But just make comment that, um I thank you for hearing this resolution and. We've been at this as a state for fifteen years. We've dropped twenty-eight million dollars into teeing this thing up. And we're at the cusp of us creating a dynamic new community in that Halava area. And I know that we're never gonna get, no issue that we discussed in this building has a hundred percent support. But the poll that came out today that shows that seventy percent of our constituents are supportive of this really is an indication that. The state has to finally execute, stop delaying. We're notorious in government for taking forever to uh permit things. Uh regulations, space timing, something, but this is one of those things that the community desperately needs. And then the poll also talked about how. Uh the, the number one issue for people and their pain points in Hawaii are. Uh affordable uh cost of living and affordable housing. And this particular development gets to both of them, it creates economic vitality in, in the district that has very little at the moment. And as we heard from Stanford Carr, is gonna, gonna be additive to the tune of forty-five hundred homes. So I'm not too sure why people are still opposed to this idea, this project when. And also there's a lot of public-private partnership money in there, right? It's just taxpayers are all in this two hundred fifty million dollars. Stanford and his group has to come up with the. Rest of it to build us a stadium that we can all enjoy, as well as give him the opportunity to make the money back on the mixed-use development outside of the stadium. So this is really an innovative. Uh and needed project. I really appreciate you, uh Chair Decoy, for hearing this and, and hopefully galvanizing the community to finally get behind this and stop being craps and pulling this thing down. We really need to move forward on this.
No, thank you. So just wanted to add, you know, um. Living on Molokai, I'm not gonna deal with all this, like, you know, the traffic, you know. Um our challenge is these jobs and I think, you know, having to live, work, play in one district, that is something that um. I used to love coming to the stadium to watch football, but man, this traffic is horrendous. Um. I would love to see um us to, like I said, live, work and play in one area without having to, to fight the battle of just trying to get to work. Or get to pick up your kids, um. I have no problem paying for the higher price of gas on Molokai, but man, staying in you guys' traffic, wow. So um. With that, um I would love to see um us move forward, get this thing built and make sure that people can do. Um those things, um just in their daily lives. So that being said, um uh Vice Chair, uh we are passing as is, um Chair goes aye.
I vote yes, Senator Fukunada.
Aye.
Chair, here, excuse me, Senator Kim and Alar excuse, Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you, and with that we are adjourned.